Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get started this evening. My name is Kathleen Willnauer. I'm the Chair of the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board. And this evening, August fifteenth, the 2022, we have one application to hear. First, we will have Sheri call the role for us.
Carol Crisca. Mike Folks is absent. Jim Neese. Brian Ludenberg is absent.
He's out of town.
Okay. Mark Crumbaker.
Here.
Kathleen Willnauer.
Here.
And Melissa Morris.
Here.
Thank you.
Mike Folks does plan on attending this evening. He's running a little bit late, and I think he'll be here before we start the application. As far as agenda items go, I think first we'll read our statement. We have a hybrid in-person virtual statement that we're going to read because there are people that will be attending the meeting tonight virtually. Sheri, if you would do that for us, please.
This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. Please note, this meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raise hand functions until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may not modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating these comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10 seconds remaining warning sound. For board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to agenda items. Are there any additions, deletions, or revisions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. And do I have a second? All in favor say aye. And those opposed? The agenda is approved for this evening. Are there any disclosures of conflicts of interest? Hearing none, are there any disclosures of external contacts or discussions? It looks like there are none. We will now move on to approval of the minutes from our February 21st, 2022 meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or revisions to the minutes? Hearing none. Yes, Sheri.
We note that Mike Folks is present.
Yes, for the record, Mike Folks did come in and is present for the rest of the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 21st?
Mark Crumbaker.
Mark Crumbaker, I make a motion to.
And do I have a second? Thank you, Jim. I have a first and a second for approval of the minutes from February 21st of 2022. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? And the minutes from February 21st have been approved. We will now move on to board reports. Is there a report of the Board of County Commissioners' actions?
Good evening, Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. I could provide an update for Board of County Commissioners' actions. The last meeting for the zoning board was February 21st, as it was approved in the minutes. That one case that was scheduled for that meeting was a accessory dwelling unit permit for 25320 West 131st Street. That was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on March 24th. That was the last application for this board. That concludes Board of County Commissioners' actions. I could also provide an update for any commission as well. The next Planning Commission meeting will be next week, it's August 23rd. That meeting, the items that will be scheduled for that agenda are going to be a solid waste management plan update. There will also be two other items that will be presented to the Planning Commission next week regarding plan use compatibility plan updates for the Johnson County Executive Airport and New Century Air Center. Staff will be providing an update to the Commission on that, as well as an upcoming update to the Sunflower area plan as a result of the recent annexation by the City of DeSoto proportion of the former Sunflower Army ammunition plant. That area plan will be updated, so those will be on for discussion and updates at the meeting next week, as well as a Public Works update, County Public Works. Happy to answer any questions regarding those items.
Jim Neese has got a question. Sean, have there been an application on solar energy permit?
There has been no application yet filed for a utility schedule. We anticipate that should be coming possibly this fall or early winter.
Are there any other questions of the planning? Moving on, the business before the board. We will be hearing application number NW22234 for CUP, Conditional Use Permit, at 30450 West 143rd Street. Don Doleshaw is the applicant, and Robert and Tammy Doleshaw are the landowners. They are requesting a CUP for a drive-through Halloween event on 30 acres on property that's owned RUR Rural in Section 35 Township 12, Range 22. And before we start, I know that Sheri went through the zoning board hybrid statement. We will be following that statement. And what we will do is introduce the applicant. The planning office will offer their presentation of 10 minutes or less. We'll have questions of staff from the zoning board. At that point, the applicant will have 10 minutes for their presentation with questions from the zoning board. Public comment section will open, and you will have three minutes to give a public comment. And again, if you do share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those, and instead just note for the record that you agree with the previous comments. And we will ask you to provide your name and your address for the record when you go up to the podium. And there will be further questions by the zoning board of staff, the applicant, or the public. At that point, we will close the public comment section. Excuse me, yes. And then the applicant will have an opportunity to answer any questions that the public may have. There will be a discussion of the application by the zoning board, and then a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners that we will make. And before we start, I know that Sean has something that he would like to add. Sean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. I just wanted to note that there is a requirement for, as part of the public notice for a public hearing for a case like this with a conditional use permit, the applicant is required to post a sign on the property at least 20 days in advance prior to the hearing. That sign was posted late. In this case, it was about a week late. And the requirement is 20 days. In this case, it was about 15 days. That's not totally unusual, but it is something that if an applicant doesn't do that, the board needs to basically say that it's okay. There has to be a recommendation from the board to allow that hearing to be considered. I will say that all the property owner notices went out on time, so all the letters to the properties within 1,000 feet was done on time, and the legal notice was published in the paper on time. Just the sign wasn't posted at least 20 days prior to the hearing. So if the board is okay with and comfortable with moving forward with the hearing, we can do that, but we just need to make an announcement to that effect.
Are there any board members that feel that not having that sign posted for the 20-day period is a concern? Hearing none, we will go ahead with the application. So Michelle from the Planning Department.
Good evening, Michelle Lanniger, Planning Staff. This application is for a conditional use permit for a drive-through Halloween event to occur yearly in October. This is an event that was previously private and has become a larger public event for which a CUP is required. The applicant is addressing the CUP issue at this time. And just to orient you, the subject property is 29 acres, outlined in blue on the screen in front of you. Located along 143rd Street, just west of Gardner Road. Here is a closer aerial of the property where you can see the site and the surrounding properties as far as how far they are apart and such. Just wanted to make a note. I know it might have been a little confusing with the staff report. Staff report had some things in it that were different than what the applicant had submitted with the original application, which is included in the end of the staff report. There's a narrative and a site plan. What is in the staff report and what's talked about tonight is the most current information. That was the submittal that the applicant provided, and we've worked through some changes since then. So what I talk about here, that's the most current information. So this is a general site plan for the site. The light blue outline is the parking area that they propose, and then the red is the driveway area. The event is a haunted house drive-through display along the site driveway to allow visitors to view the haunt while remaining in their vehicles. Vehicles can park in the designated fenced parking area at the end of the driveway where drinks and candy are provided. And there's also opportunities to take pictures with various props in this area. The event is proposed to occur every Friday and Saturday night, depending on weather, in October only, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Last year, the owners had a way bigger turnout than expected and had some significant traffic backup. To address some of this, they're proposing to use SignUp Genius, which is an online reservation system to allow for 30 time slots per a half an hour. That way, it's a little more manageable onsite and offsite. This total of 240 vehicles on the site per event night. Details on utilizing the reservations this year versus just, I mean, whenever you please, will be advertised on their social media outlets. The applicant is proposing three to six volunteers to help conduct traffic along 143rd Street to help avoid blocking access to neighbors' driveways and then the road. Onsite visitors can park in the designated area. It's the light blue area identified on the site plan. Excuse me. For opportunities to take pictures with different props and drinks and candy. This is an optional part of the event. Parking area, which is directly adjacent, be lit from existing wall packs that are on the building to the north. Signs will be posted onsite notifying traffic that the driveway is for two-lane traffic. You need to keep right. Most of the traffic comes to the site from the east, from the Gardner Road area. Visitors will be instructed to turn west onto 143rd Street when they leave. That way, there's less conflicting traffic along the street. And also, no parking signs will be posted along portions of 143rd Street to discourage people from parking and getting out and walking the event. The applicant will need to coordinate with the Sheriff's Office regarding the schedule of the event. They won't be policing the event or really being involved with the event unless necessary. Can always call the Sheriff's Office if traffic becomes an issue and they need some help. Trash receptacles will be provided, and 143rd Street will be cleaned up by noon the day following the event. Two portable toilets and hand sanitizer stations will be provided onsite, and no accessory buildings will be utilized by the public for the event. In the event of fire emergency, the traffic would be cleared from the driveway to allow emergency vehicles to access. With the event being seasonal and short-term and the stipulations, staff will be minimal effect to the surrounding property. I did have a neighbor call me about the project, and he was in support of it. That was the only comment that I received on the project. Call your attention to this piece of paper that should be in front of you. Got the red and the green colors. Staff is recommending some tweaks to the stipulations. The red strike through is things that we're recommending be deleted. The green are things that we are recommending be added. Really, it's for clarification purposes. It doesn't really change what we're asking for in the stipulations. Then on the back, there's a number 15. My last stipulation apparently lost the formatting, so it's there. It's just not numbered in the staff report. I'm going to go through these recommended stipulations. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit. Stipulation one, the permit allows the operation of the drive-through event as shown on the site plan in accordance with the stipulations. The term for the permit shall be a period not to exceed five years. The event shall be limited to Friday and Saturday evenings in October from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. No more than 30 visitors shall visit the site every half hour of the event. Temporary sanitary facility shall be provided. Number seven, trash on the property and along 143rd Street shall be picked up by noon the day after the event. Number eight, no public activity shall occur in any buildings. Number nine, a traffic control plan shall be approved by Johnson County Public Works prior to the event. This is one that we're recommending deleting. The information, the second sentence off of that is about temporary traffic control devices. This is probably more than what is necessary, so we have just simplified that stipulation. Number 10, I added temporary, no parking signs. Don't want no permanently, permanent no parking signs out there. So temporary no parking signs shall be posted along 143rd Street for the nights of the scheduled events. No spillage from this use shall occur off-site. Just light spillage, sorry. No outdoor strobe lights shall be visible off-site. I can hear my formatting messed up again. Should be number 13, no outdoor PA address. System shall be utilized. Would be number 14, shows up on your screen. Prior to the event, provided the County Sheriff's Office was the schedule of event dates. If it's foreseen that traffic is backing up, causing hazards and congestion, contact the Sheriff's Department for assistance. And then number 16, the applicant shall comply in accordance with existing federal, state, and local health laws. And with that, I can stand for any questions, and the applicant is here to provide you with some information also.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions of the zoning board for the Planning Department? Hearing none, we will move to the applicant presentation. Dawn, are you going to be giving the presentation this evening? Okay.
Oh. Thank you.
Okay, what she handed out was, this is a letter that we sent to all of the neighbors to let them know what the event is, to let them know that we will be doing everything we can. It did explode last year, and I don't know exactly why.
Would you state your name, please?
Yes. My name is Tammy Doleshaw, the property owner.
Thank you, Tammy.
Oh, okay. All right. Can you hear me fine now? Yep, I can hear it better, too. Okay, so anyway, this is the letter that we sent to each neighbor to let them know. This is totally a charity event. We charge nothing. The drinks, the candy, the getting pictures with props is all free. The only thing that we ask is if they can to bring a new unwrapped toy. We had partnered with, this is Roberta, and she started the Secret Santa group many years ago in Gardner. We've been having a one-party that night for 25, 26 years, and everybody always said, why don't you charge for this? It's so great. And that was not our intent at all. We love Halloween. We love the fall season. So we had started, why don't you bring a toy? And we will donate it to Toys R' Tots, to whoever we can find. And we found Roberta a few years into that, and the year that COVID started, we thought, no party. We're not going to have as many donations as we would like to do, to provide Christmas for as many kids as we could. And so we had come up with, we'll just do it as a drive-through. They can drop off a toy, and that's really the only reason it started. And it did so well, and we were able to get so... The donations were just fabulous. We were able to do several more hundred children than we ever would have been able to do, and to give them a very good Christmas for children who would have not got anything. And I'll let Roberta talk about that, but that really is the only reason that we started this drive-through. And now we kind of think we hate not to do it because we were really able to do a lot. So this event has never was started to charge any money or to make a profit. It simply started because, actually, because of COVID. Or we would have just been still having one night, one party. Everybody come and bring a toy, and where we would get like one bin, and we were able to get so many. It was crazy how many people showed up. We were dumbfounded. We don't really know how that happened, but I guess social media must have had something to do with that. But we're trying to keep everything under control as much as possible. We're literally trying to do everything we can to make the traffic doable and less convenient for the neighbors. I know that it was very inconvenient for many neighbors, but last year, we had scheduled nine days. We did have to, if it rains at all even a few days before, if it's muddy, we just can't do it. So we canceled three of the days last year, so we really only had it six days. And this year, we're going to be scheduling eight days because it depends on how those Fridays and Saturdays, you know, fall for that month. So this days, and so odds are, a couple of those eight will also be canceled. We keep that. We just have our own little Facebook page, Jack's Hollow, that we try to put everything on to let everybody know. We can't do the event tomorrow night. It's too muddy. And so that's really the only way that we communicate with people is through that little Facebook page we have. But I'll let Roberta talk about what we've been able to accomplish by doing this.
Roberta, would you please state your name and address and how you're involved?
So my name is Roberta Long, and I am the original Secret Santa. And our project is a community outreach. As Tammy said, well, let me give you my address. It's in Gardner, 18417 Juniper Street in Gardner, Kansas. So we actually started this project in Johnson County. It wasn't intended to just be for Gardner. We did the whole metro. And the first year, we were able to do 240 children. And since then, we've done just under 1,000 after partnering with Jack's Hollow. What's important to note is the initial few years that we did it, probably six years that we did it, it was bringing in only pre-owned, for the majority of the donations were pre-owned. So, I mean, the children, they don't care because they weren't going to get anything. These are kids who fall through the cracks. These are people's children who they don't qualify or they miss deadlines. Like, they miss the mayor's Christmas, or they didn't know they were going to need help, and so they didn't know there were deadlines. These are kids that the government-funded programs, they've missed, or they didn't know existed. And those are the kids that we help, are the ones that literally fall through the cracks and would not get anything. We have three requirements. You have to have the need. You have to register, and you have to show up to pick them up because we didn't have a way to transport them. But the most important thing is partnering with them. We went from 240 kids to just under 1,000 so far. And they had a, as she said, they had a Halloween party, and it was just a private Halloween party, and I participated in that. But her daughter, Kristin, saw my posts, my continued posts, begging for donations, every year, begging for donations of toys. Never, I never asked for a dime. It was always just toys. Please donate toys. Don't throw it away. There's a kid that'd appreciate it, you know? And she saw my post, and when she saw my post, she said, we have toys. Can you use them? And she brought a load of toys, and we were able to give new toys for the first time for these children, which was huge. And because of this partnership, we have grown it into, not only do they get new toys, they get more than one toy. And they also get, we have a little party for them. We partnered with Main Event. Main Event in Olathe allows us to have their space, and so all of the families can come pick up, and they can play the games for free and pick up, you know, treats and things like that. So it's really grown. I didn't expect that to happen with Secret Santas, and she didn't expect that. And what an unlikely pair, Halloween and Christmas, anyway. I mean, so anyway, the most important thing to note, though, is these kids deserve to have a Christmas, too. It was started by one family who their daughter was having nine seizures a day. She could, so her mom had to quit working. And she made a post on social media and wanted to know if there were any organizations that she could get assistance. And that's what started it. That's when we started Secret Santa. We knew there were kids at that point that were falling through the cracks, that the parents missed deadlines, didn't know. And ironically, she got a job that she could do from home right before it was time to pick up and didn't even take advantage of it. But in the meantime, we had hundreds of kids that had applied, so that's kind of our story. It's a short version.
Thank you both very much. Are there any questions of the applicant from the zoning board members?
I have a simple question. Have you talked to your neighbors, and have they had any objections to what you did?
We have spoke. I'm sorry. Yeah, we have spoke personally to several neighbors. We have one of them here tonight. And I sent the letters to everybody, and so many of the neighbors already knew about our party because I always invited everybody, even people we didn't know. I would go put it in their mailbox, and, you know, we're having a little party. So most of them knew about it. I'm sure there are many that probably aren't happy about the traffic for last year. Most of them were, you know, we understand it's only a couple nights for a whole year. We know what you're doing, and we appreciate that. So personally, I have not spoke to someone who was irate or anything like that, but I'm sure there probably are some of them that would rather... But I'm sure there probably is some of them that would rather us not do it. But once, that's why I wanted to give them a letter. So they realize this is not something that we're doing, we're not charging anybody. This is simply to get toys for Secret Santa. Or we would just have our one personal party for the entire year. So there probably is someone out there that's not very happy about it. I haven't personally talked to them. So.
Thank you.
Jim, niece, I have a question. How many people were there last year?
Well, it... Well, yeah, it did explode. There was long lines and I...
When you say long line, what's that mean?
I mean, from our driveway all the way down to Moonlight. And then we had a family friend who knew how to direct traffic. And the third weekend, I think it was, he got out there. And what was happening was Gardner Road coming both directions and Hundred-and-Forty-third coming both directions was getting a lot of traffic that was keeping it all backed up. So what he was doing, he was at Hundred-and-Forty-third and Gardner Road. And he was having everybody go down Moonlight, which there, that's one mile. And on the third page, there are, the fourth page I give you, I made a little drawing. There's one mile of gravel road that has one house. So it's not making people where they can't get to their house, it's not blocking driveways. So we found, every week, we found something that helped a little bit, you know? And because this is definitely a learning curve for sure. But that is what we're proposing this year also. That's why I drew that little map, is to get everybody going down and being on Gardner Road. I'm sorry, on, all the way down to Moonlight on Hundred-and-Forty-third, which is a gravel road. That way, it's disturbing, you know, really one house.
How, Jim, niece? So how did you control, you're saying thirty people now that it's time? And how, and does your driveway, can two, two cars pass at the same...
Yeah, they can. For our driveway, it's just a driveway, but it's wide enough for two-way.
So what, so how many people did you have parking in the property last year at one time?
I don't know, it'd be a rough estimate. We had hundreds of cars go through in a night. Because we counted one night and it was a lot. It was like nine-hundred cars.
Yes, that, with all due respect, it's a wonderful thing you're doing. But that's, that's, you know, it's really a concern to me because if you can do that and back the road up and somebody else wants a pumpkin patch, somebody else wants something else.
Right.
We're setting a precedent that hundreds of cars can be on one of the main arteries.
Well, that is why we're trying to control it with that new sign-up genius. And so what we've done is we've set up slots from six to six-thirty, six-thirty to seven-thirty.
So, I mean, that's the only issue that I have with it.
Right, and that's what we are trying to control.
I love what you're doing and everything, but you're telling me you had nine-hundred cars.
We did, and that's what we're really trying to control with this sign-up genius.
Nine-hundred cars?
Yeah, that's what over, it started at six and that night, because people were setting for two hours to get in, we didn't stop them from coming in. So that was all the way till like eleven-thirty that night.
How are you gonna, so you put this out now and fifteen-hundred cars show up, or five or six-hundred cars in a night? How are you gonna, how are you gonna control that?
Well, what we're going to do is with this sign-up genius, we're going to put on our Jack's Hollow page that it is by reservation only and you must sign up. We're still working through how to use this, but I have got it going where there's going to be thirty cars allowed for every thirty minutes. So you can sign up and then they will receive, I believe it's an email back.
So how are you gonna, so I live in Prairie Village, right? And I want to go out the country and I'm going to go to the pumpkin patch and I'm going to come to your place. And I signed up and I know I'm not supposed to be thirty minutes ahead of time. Me and ten of my neighbors with their kids are coming out there and we come earlier. And so now you have, you know, people that are well-intended that come out there or you, or you can't get in. I mean, I, I, that really... Yeah, but I gotta be able to go to the Chiefs game and I go two hours early, you know, or whatever.
Right.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not be, I'm not trying to be negative.
No, no, I understand. And that is something we are trying to work through. And that's why with this sign-up genius, as people, and you know people that are going to sign up that don't show up. There's going to be people who show up who haven't signed up. That is going to happen. But we are going to have people at the front gate and people who are directing traffic to let these people know that as they come down, that, you know, they have a, they're in the slot between seven and seven-thirty. As long as they have provided a slot, we're going to allow them to go through. If there are, you know, fifteen cars going up, but two of them have not signed up, we're going to let them come through because there's not a traffic problem. So we are trying to every day and each week, fight through how the changes that may need to be made. We started that last year because each weekend, we got a little better, you know? And by that lap, the very last weekend, we had to cancel because of mud. The weekend before, which ended up being, would have been the next to the last, went pretty smooth because we had three traffic people up there, just volunteers, and someone at the front gate and going, okay, four cars in, four cars coming out, things like that. So each week, we do get it better and better. So we're hoping that we can work through any of that.
I have another question. What kind of, of insurance do you have for people who are on the property?
Well, we just have our homeowners, that's it. We have not got a particular, I do post signs on the front and in the back that says not responsible for loss or accident, just so people know, you know, if you're willing to come on and drive-through. I mean, we're, we've, we've never had a problem. So I cross my fingers every weekend night that, but we've never had a problem.
I have a question about the traffic.
Sure.
So when people sign up for this thirty-minute slot, when they show up, do you, they give you their name and you say, okay, you're on the list, you're not on the list?
No, I believe that that's, literally, we're just starting this. So I am trying to learn through the process of what's going to happen. But yes, they do, when they sign up, they put, fill in their name and an email address. So we will have a list of who has signed up that evening because we can run that off. That was right. Roberta's working with me, she's great at all this computer stuff and I'm only semi-great at it. And so we're working through trying to see, when you go in and sign up, what is it that we get back? I'm sure we get a thing that this slot is filled and we get their name.
We'll be able to log in and print off just like I did.
Right.
Print off who's in what time slot. And then who she has at the beginning and then at the middle and who's directing X. She's going to have more than one person throughout.
Right.
Also, and they can check the list. If you're on the list, then you can go through. If you're not on the list, then you're told that you have to register and come back.
Sign up for seven o'clock. Right? And thirty other people sign up for the seven to seven-thirty slot. If everyone shows up at seven o'clock, you're still going to have thirty cars sitting out on Four Hundred-and-Thirty-first.
Yes, we will, yes. And there was a lot more cars than that last year. And like I said, when we had the people out there directing traffic, it went pretty smooth. Yes, so every thirty minutes, we're allowing thirty cars.
How many parking spaces do you have?
Well, it's, it is a huge horse pasture is what it is. You actually could fit a lot of cars in there and we've never filled it up or anything. So there's plenty of room for parking because it's our...
There's several acres.
It's several acres, yeah. It's our horse pasture, basically.
So people drive through and then they can park?
They can, everybody doesn't. Probably, my guess is maybe fifty percent of them, because a lot of them, oh, we don't need to get out. You know, what we do is we, each car that comes up, we have someone stand there and go, if you would like to have some cider and candy, if the kids would like to get out and take some pictures, you can. You pull up into the horse pasture. If not, just follow this and it will take you right out. So probably only about fifty percent, maybe that many, get out at all.
So how did, how did you end up with nine-hundred cars there? I mean, I, I don't understand the promotion of this. How, how did it get promoted to where it was?
I actually don't know. Alls we did was put it on our, our Jack's Hollow Facebook page, which is only, I don't know, it's not gigantic. It's not like thirty thousand people that get that. And on the Gardner, what is it called? Citizens for Gardner page, I was just letting citizens from Gardner know that we were having the Secret Santa event. That's the only social media we put out there at all. And from what I understand, some other organizations picked it up and put it on their website, like Things to Do in Kansas. I just heard that.
Well, that's inevitably going to happen.
Right. So that's how it got, that's how it exploded. I mean, because I was dumbfounded. I had no idea that, you know, we'd reach that.
Yeah, I, I understand the sign-up genie thing as far as trying to help alleviate the problem. But I also understand that that's probably not going to be as effective as you would probably hope.
Won't be totally effective.
Because...
Probably help.
You're going to have a lot of people that are going to show up ten minutes early.
Right.
And you're going to have a lot of people that don't sign up at all.
Right.
And...
But I think that's why...
You know, it could potentially become exactly what it was, if you ask me. I mean, I'd be surprised if it wasn't, but that's just my pessimistic view of the way people...
Right.
Do stuff because, oh, I'm not going to sign up because we might not make it or whatever. And then they end up deciding to do it.
Well, I figure that there's, there's totally going to be people who sign up and don't show up. There's going to be people who show up and haven't. But how we're going to try to control that is, we'll have to say, did you sign up? Are you on the list? If they're not, and there's, you know, a row of people that need to go in, they're going to have, we're just going to suggest they sign up for a different night. It's how we're going to handle it.
So what north-south road is there that you come to when you head west on Hundred-and-Forty-third Street?
It's Kill Creek. That's what we're going to do is everybody comes out of the driveway, they're going to have to exit right that way because almost nobody comes from the west side. They almost all come from the east.
So what's the north-south road west of Waverly?
That's Kill Creek.
And it goes both north and south?
No, it just goes, it just goes south. There's, it's, there doesn't go north, it just goes south.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no north?
No, they would have to go down to Hundred-and-Fifty-first and then go back that way. On that last page, that I drew a little thing that shows and how many tenths of a miles it is from, you know, like our driveway. So yes, what we're planning on is everybody that comes out, instead of going back east on Hundred-and-Forty-third, which that's where it's going to be the most traffic, they'll have to go west and take a right out of the driveway and go down to Kill Creek and over and do exit.
So how many, how, do you have like people on the, at these haunted sites? I mean, how, how is it, can you explain exactly what it actually is?
Yeah, well, well, the grandkids and a few grandkids' friends, what they do is they dress up in their little costume and they get out there. On the driveway, we set up little bitty, you know, scenes of something scary or something, you know, cutesy or whatever. And so as they drive through, the grandkids go out there and, you know, just like at a haunted house where they just walk up and scare you, that's what they've been doing. And that's what's so fun for so many of the people. The kids are like in the back of the pickup or whatever. And so, and they just scream and have the best time. And when they get through there, they love it. So yeah, it was, it was, it's fun.
Jim, niece, I've got, I've got one other question. So I'm coming, I'm, I'm coming from the east and I've got a seven-thirty time.
Okay.
And ten of the people that were there last year, the nine-hundred, say, let's go back and do this again.
Right.
So I'm coming across Hundred-and-Forty-third Street. And you have somebody at your driveway checking, okay, niece, you know, you're seven-thirty, that's okay. And then, so you, you either wait because it's not seven-thirty. So you're waiting, sitting on Hundred-and-Forty-third Street. And behind, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm making this up.
Right.
Trying to understand. So then you've got two other people that didn't sign up because they were there last year and they're behind the guy that signed up. And they come up there and say, you didn't, you didn't sign up, you can't come in. So what do they do?
Head on and keep going down Hundred-and-Forty-third to Kill Creek to exit because they're going to have to, we will suggest that you did not sign up. And so you're going to need to sign up for another night.
So what you would have, you would have thirty cars, if I get there fifteen minutes earlier, I want to have thirty cars lined up on Hundred-and-Forty-third waiting to go in for my time slot. And hopefully, thirty cars are going to be leaving...
Right.
About that time because, but some of them are going to be staying in there because they parked the car and the kids can walk around the country and all that kind of stuff.
Well, you're not opening a barn.
No, and, and so there's, the only thing to walk around is we have props that we have all in the yard there and for people to take pictures. So they don't linger very long. They get the cider and a piece of candy and they take a couple pictures and they go. So it's a pretty even flow of people coming and people going. Now, when you're on the street and you got there at seven, but your appointment was at seven-thirty, as long as you're in the line and you signed up, we're figuring, just let them keep coming in. Because if someone's early, someone else is going to be late. And so, you know, we will be doing it kind of however seems to work right then. I mean, pretty much.
Let me ask you this question. What, how would you feel if we didn't do this for five years, but we did it? We did it for two years, okay? With all anticipation of having this go through. Because wonderful thing that you're doing and the way the people are in the area, they're going to go, so this could, this could... Technically, we, we, you don't know because you were totally surprised if nine-hundred people came over the last year, right?
Yes.
So this is on, I happen to be in charge of the events at the CAF hangar in Olathe. We got people looking for stuff to do and they come from Lee Summit. So somebody's going to put this on social media and hopefully, it's going to be a success. But having said that, at some point in time, for the area and for the traffic thing, it could go, it could, it could just go out of control. Five years is a long time. Okay? And so my thoughts, what I would like to ask you is if it was a shorter term, would you be opposed to that if we said...
No, I wouldn't be.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we're doing trial and error here too.
Yeah.
I mean, we are...
We can tell that.
Yes, we are, we're just trying to do the best we can do to make it flow the easiest way and make it not hard on the neighbors and be able to...
Because I mean, if it got to be five thousand people.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
It could, it, it, it could, it could go.
Don't say that, that makes me nervous.
Well, that's, that's, that's why I'm asking the question.
Right.
Because you had nine-hundred cars.
Yes.
Which was probably two thousand people or so. Cars with the kids and everything.
Right.
And you haven't advertised.
Right.
And you, you know, you haven't really opened it up.
No.
So...
On the flip side of that, a lot of the people that came last year hadn't been before. And even to her point, she told me, because I was out there helping. And she was like, I don't know why anybody would come that far to drive through this. It's a bunch of kids just scaring you. And you come in, you go in the driveway, they've got a very long driveway with trees over the top. So you drive through this driveway and then you just drive back out the other side. It's like that fast. So...
Well, and I actually...
You're not going to have the same people.
No.
Some of the people will not come back.
Right, I mean, you've seen it, you've seen it, you know?
But, okay, I don't want to belabor a point, but you see where I'm coming from on that?
Yes.
And you're, you're, you're guessing and stuff. And it's our thing to try to figure out how to do this to make it where it, it, it works and it's good and you keep it going. But at some point in time, if we give you a ten-year thing or a five-year deal, it could be really, at least that's my thought. Now, I don't know what everybody else thinks about this, but that's kind of my way of thinking.
Well, I know that every day and every weekend and every month, and we think about this through the year, I know that things will change and evolve. We may have to do things that we can't even imagine of maybe not doing it as many nights or something. We are perfectly willing to do any of the things that need to be done to make it run as smooth as possible. We are not going to advertise. We are going to keep it on our Facebook page, you know? And so we're not going to advertise. So I'm in hopes that, you know, it doesn't get...
But all due respect, if you're on the internet, social deal.
Right.
There's ten thousand moms and dads wanting to have their kids do something different.
Right.
On the weekend or Halloween night and...
Right.
Doesn't cost anything and going to give some, something nice to some folks. So it, it's going to be advertised.
By word of mouth, if nothing else.
If it's on the internet, it will be, big time.
Yeah, and we understand that.
This is Kathleen Willnour. Are there any more questions of the applicant from the zoning board members? Uh, hearing none, uh, we'll go ahead and open the public comment section of our evening. If you two, Tammy and Roberta, would like to sit down.
Thank you.
Um, we will ask for public comments and I'll remind you to please state your name and your address when you come up to the podium. Uh, you'll have a three-minute time limit and we will take comments from uh people that are present in the room at this time. Yes, ma'am. All right, please come to the podium and state your name and your address.
My name is Timothy Crane. I live at 30750 West 143rd Street. There's one house in between me and the event. This is my husband, Russell Crane. If you could sit on the road and listen to the children that come out of here that have had the most wonderful evening of fun. The road, yes, was crowded last year. It's strangely so. It was not bad, however. Everybody was very courteous. People stayed in line. They took their turn. Traffic was coming from both ways actually on 143rd Street to turn into the event. And everybody took their turn. There was no fights. There was no loud yelling. There was nothing other than the kids having a good time. And when you see what kids are involved in nowadays and to see parents take the time to bring them out to an event like this, it is, i- it's wonderful to see. Uh, I could sit out on my deck and listen to these kids laugh and talk about the good time that they had. Yes, the traffic was bad, but it was not horrible. There was no foul language. We had no vandalism to our property. And there are several things that they could have torn up if kids had been misbehaving. But it, it was a wonderful time and we didn't even go to the event. We've lived there 30 years and it's, it's been a pleasure to see it every year and to see what they have accomplished with Secret Santa and with kids that have enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Vicky Fisher or Victoria Fisher. I'm at 30540 West 143rd. I am the house and property owner directly south of the Dole Shaws. Um, my, my driveway is to the west of the Dole Shaws, the first driveway. Um, if you can, if you could put the map up of the house of their property and you can see directly what I'm talking about. I am in that lower blue corner. So you see the area where they're gonna park. Now, I'm in the property, I own those two lots. Um, when you go to Google Map and you put in their address, it comes to my house. I'm 305, they're 304. My driveway goes to a barn. People come to their house, they come down my driveway, they go to my barn. They back up my area. They have broken down bushes. They've done a number of things over the years that I've had to deal with. I had 900 cars turning around in my driveway last year. I had, you're gonna have people go west down the road. You'll have them turning around in my driveway to go back out east to Gardner Road. And, you know, I, I have, you know, I have tremendous respect for what they're wanting to do. I really do. Their intent, I know, is really good. I, I will give them that. But it has been a big inconvenience. I was two hours trying to get home one night last year. I saw people urinating along the road. I saw somebody turn around back over one of the neighbor's fences down the road. I did experience laughing and screaming and I did see people drinking alcohol all up and down the road. I sat in the traffic for a couple of hours. I saw this. So, you know, it's, while it's a good event and I hope, and I, I really hope that if you're able to get that this event genie to work, that'd be great. But I do have great concern about this. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. What, with what they've proposed uh for the traffic, uh allowing only 30 cars per half hour, do you think that was going to uh make a significant difference in uh the way things go or are you optimistic at all or is this something you don't think is gonna work?
I, I have no um thought one way or the other. I don't believe though that direct, directing traffic to the west to go down to Kill Creek, that people do it. That's over a mile away. I think people will be finding opportunity to pull in a driveway, turn around and go back east to Gardner Road like they came, especially for people that are not used to being in the country. They go, they come and they, they say, oh, it's so dark out here. And, you know, they're going to turn around. They are not going to go clear down to Kill Creek. We have no way to monitor that they're gonna go down to Kill Creek, go clear around, you know, you're tucking a square mile or better for them to, to redirect traffic. Also, how are you gonna monitor this from year to year? My suggestion would be one year to try it out. Let's see what, what kind of impact it has on us neighbors again.
Okay.
I mean, if you're gonna do it and I, and as I said, I, I truly do respect all of you in wanting to do this. I really do. But it does have a big impact. And I worry about um emergency vehicles coming. There was absolutely no way emergency vehicle could come, could have come down the road last year. But I do have one question. How wide is your gate for people to go in and out of? One car. So one car can go in and out of their driveway, basically.
Uh, Tammy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need you to come up and use the microphone to answer her. So let's have her ask the questions that she does and then we'll come back to you and ask for your answers if that's okay.
Um, also, another question would be, how far do you anticipate people having come? Because I had talked to the daughter last, last year and she said people drove four hours to come and they would turn down no one to come to the event. Well, I mean, the last event or last time slot was supposed to be at 10. If they're there at 10:30 until 10:30, is it over at 10:30 or is it over at midnight or is it over at 1 a.m.? As I experienced last year, my property line is 40 feet from their property. My house, excuse me, my house is 40 feet from the property line. That's where my bedroom is. I, I did hear it all night long or for many, many hours. I did hear, see the strobe lights going. I did hear the generators going to light up the lights where their front entrance gates. Because they do have a lot of that stuff that is going on. It's not just, you know, a quiet event. And while, yes, I do agree, it brings joy to a lot of people. But it also has a big impact. And I did talk to many neighbors that didn't choose to come tonight. Um, many people hadn't even seen the sign, the zoning sign. They live further east. They don't come west down the road. They hadn't seen the sign. So, you know, I'm not so sure we're getting a great representation of everybody that would be impacted on 143rd.
Good.
Thank you, Victoria, for your comments. We appreciate it. Uh, are there any uh public comments on Zoom?
No.
Thank you. Uh, Tammy, if you would please come back to the podium. The, so one of the questions was the, the car width of your driveway coming in.
Right, okay. So the driveway is wide enough for two cars, but we have this metal arch that we built uh that says Jack's Hollow and it is only one car through. So how we do it is we allow four cars to go in, four cars to come out. So, so it's in constant flow, but only one car at a time. And as it, for emergency vehicles, um, what we have all talked about and what for every volunteer that night, I always have a discussion with everybody. If there was ever anything that someone twisted an ankle, had a heart attack, I don't, whatever. We have always said that we would, we're in constant contact with the person at the gate. We would stop the cars. All cars would go straight into the um horse field, which would be very quick because it, we wouldn't be out scaring. And then we would clear the driveway in that way. So we've tried to think of all of those things to make sure there would be emergency access. Um, the cars coming in, the cars going out. Now, I do know that her driveway and ours is one apart. Our address in the center is turned, so she does get vehicles that come. But anybody that's coming for the drive-through, it's pretty obvious where the drive-through is. I mean, it's, the sign is lit up, there's, you know. So there, people are not pulling in her driveway and running over bushes because of a drive-through. UPS, that probably has happened because they deliver more packages to her house that go to our house than they should. I've tried to control that too, but I, UPS doesn't want to listen to me. But, so, um, it does get confusing because her address and our address is literally so simple and they're one driveway apart. But as for the drive-through, everybody knows where the drive-through is happening. It's pretty obvious.
I have a question about the, the cars coming and going.
Uh huh.
Um, when, when cars are coming in and they're going through the, on a drive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are they, or, or is it like bumper to bumper all the way through?
Um, no, not necessarily. Um, a lot of cars will stop to look around for a little while. So there's, it's not bumper to bumper. I don't think it ever has been. Now, I've not been standing on the driveway, but I'm at the end where people come in and we get lapses of people coming. So no, it is not bumper to bumper. Now, some people roll through real slow and some people, you know, might be three or four miles an hour. I, the other day, I was wondering, how long does it actually take when you enter the driveway to when you exit? And if you are at a roll, I mean, just barely so you can see all the little scary things, it takes about six minutes.
Six minutes?
About six minutes, yes.
Okay, so technically, if there's cars coming in and there's cars going out and they get backed up a little bit at the entrance because you're letting a few in and a few out.
Yes.
If an ambulance came and they needed to get to the parking lot. You're telling me it would take probably six minutes for them to get there?
No. That's if a car is literally at a roll. I, what I did was I pulled in my driveway. I literally was rolling. I mean, I wasn't even touching the gas because I wanted to see if you are a person coming in to look at all the little things, they're pretty much just going extremely slow. That's if you're going extremely slow. If you, if everybody's just driving down the driveway, it's four tenths of a mile. You did it the other day. I think it's four tenths. That's how long the driveway is. So it's a four tenths of a mile. And if everybody's going go, it's not gonna take, the time of emergency vehicle to get there, it would be cleared. Because we've all discussed that very much because that's a, that's a concern if, if an emergency vehicle ever did need to get in there. So it would not take six minutes to empty the driveway.
Okay. So uh, as far as the timing goes, um, when do you propose to have your last sign up?
Well, it's at from 9:30 to 10. So I'm assuming that the person that's there for the 10 o'clock. Yeah, that's how I said it. Yeah, from 9:30 to 10, there's 30 cars allowed. So it might go to 10:30. I don't know. Before you got those 30 cars through, I don't know.
Because I noticed on the stipulations, it says no vehicles, no visitors will remain on the property past 10 p.m.
I did see that on there and maybe we might have to make that last slot just to 9:30 instead of nine, from nine to 9:30 maybe.
I'm, I'm thinking nine to 9:30 is gonna have to be your last.
That's probably a smart way to do it. I didn't think about that when I was making these little slots on that sign up genius.
So do you agree with the stipulations that the county's?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Uh, this is Kathleen Willnour. Thank you, Tammy. We will uh close the public comment section of our meeting this evening. And we will have a discussion of the application by the members of the zoning board.
Well, uh, the first thing I'd like to discuss is what, what Jim brought up earlier. That is the uh stipulation or the um duration of the length of time that uh this application is uh set for. I mean, five years is number one, a pretty long time. And number two, this, if, if this, if this has been this disruptive and there are this many questions about signups and who's gonna show up and which way they're gonna go and, and that kind of thing, traffic control, the whole nine yards. I don't see any way possible to allow this more than one year for a trial. I mean, I, I hate to make them come back every year, but if you come back next year and everything's hunky-dory and you know, maybe we can consider a longer, longer term at that point. But, but I don't think initially, just giving them a five-year uh term and not knowing a lot of the specifics on how it's gonna work and work effectively, um, I think that's too long a period of time.
Uh, Jim, I, you know, I, I agree with you that this is a tough one because we want this to work and uh first of all, you can have signups and all this kind of stuff and plan that. But if the, if the, if the, without any listing or anything hardly at all, 900 people showed up over a four-week period or over a nine-day period of time, there are gonna be people showing up there that are not signed up, that are gonna be in line. And it's gonna be hard for Billy Joe at the, or Betty Joe at the thing saying, no, you gotta go back. I, I mean, it's just, I'm not saying that that wouldn't happen, but I think we've just got so many questions here that uh and I think we need to give it a chance. And uh and for, for them to a- a- answer some questions that they have themselves, you know. So uh when we get ready to do this, I'm with you. I'm, I, I would, I think we ought to give them a year. Come back and uh take an hour or two out of their time to come back and, and we ask these questions. You know what we're asking. You're gonna have the answers. You know, a good salesperson answers a question before it's asked, right? So next year, uh, come back and say, hey, we can't do this. That's possible. You know, that's just possible. You have to thank your neighbors and, and I'm surprised that staff, you know, went along with five years, but that's what they recommended approval with and we don't have to agree with them. So that's ultimately, when everybody gets finished, I think I'd, I might, I make a motion maybe to all the stipulations. And I, I'm not so sure that we shouldn't require a police officer out there. You know, you, you've got volunteers directing traffic and my personal thing, there's some liability that you're gonna have there. You'd lose the farm real quick if the wrong thing happened, especially if there's drinking. Okay, well, you may say there's no drinking, but if I go out there and I'm drinking, how are you gonna control that? So anyway, that's, that's just my general thoughts. It's a good, it's a good thing and we want it to work.
I had that thought as well, Jim, and I'm not sure that um you know, the sign-up thing, that may help, okay? And uh, I'm not sure that the county um shouldn't, I, I don't know about traffic control and who, who regulates that, Public Works or whatever, but I'm not sure that that's not a, that. that 143rd Street isn't a, more of a one-way street between six and 10 on a Friday and Saturday night. I mean, that may be a way of alleviating that, but I, you know, I'm just kind of thinking off the top of my head here. But I'm thinking if, if every car had to go west, whether they're coming from the east to the site or leaving the site and, and going back home, if they all had to go west and it was a one-way street, uh, on 143rd Street from, say, I don't know, maybe Gardner or wherever the problem started, maybe that's something that could be considered by the county, so that they could actually pull this off without, uh, coming back next year and just having to be a big mess again, and not being able to, to do this great thing they're trying, trying to do.
This is Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. I could try to answer that question, Mr. Fox. It's a good question. We have had that question as well regarding traffic control. County Public Works does not manage, uh, traffic control for private events like this. The Sheriff's Office also does not manage traffic control for private events. If there are public events, they would. If there are issues, so if there are issues with traffic, the Sheriff's Office has indicated they would respond to any requests for management of traffic if there's an issue with congestion or problems. And, and I believe they patrolled this area last year. And so that we've asked that they coordinate the Sheriff's Office for these, the nights of these scheduled events. If there are any issues, the Sheriff's Department would respond and would, uh, direct traffic if necessary. However, as a general rule, to change the direction of traffic and make anything a one-way street, that would require a little bit more coordination. The Public Works Department didn't really, um, I mean, I think we have Martin Donjaro of Public Works Staff on Zoom. I may want to see if he's available, if he is, to see if he could elaborate if anything. We, we didn't think it would be advisable to recommend any change to traffic control on that street as far as any one-way traffic. That would require more elaborate signage. Uh, there are standards you have to follow for the, uh, traffic control. There's a, there's designated standards you have to follow. That, that would require quite an elaborate plan. We wouldn't think that that would be necessary. I think staff would agree. Probably the better approach may be to recommend a shorter term, like a one-year CUP to monitor it, and to see how the Sheriff's Office would respond if necessary, if there are issues. But certainly, I may see if Martin, uh, Donjaro is available, if he would add anything else, um, to answer those questions.
Well, yeah, okay, I, I understand that. And, and maybe, maybe the owner should be on the, on the, uh, people putting the, the thing together. I, I think that if you really want to do this, and you want to keep doing it for the next five years, the first thing on your website ought to be about traffic and, uh, signing up, and keeping this in mind that there's neighbors and that, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to mess this up for, for everybody. I mean, if there's any way to promote that, I think that'd be a good idea, because otherwise, I, I don't, I don't know how this is gonna, I don't know how this is gonna keep going. I mean, I'd love to see it keep going, but it has to be done in a way that is acceptable for everyone that, that comes and goes, and people that live around there as well. So, I, I'd entertain a motion right now. I mean, if anybody else has any comments.
Yep. Um, Carol Kreska. So you said, so this is gonna be considered a private event, right? So what, on, on the stipulation, "No public activity shall occur in any buildings number eight", does that stipulation need to be in there since it's private? Not that it matters, but not, I was just a bit perplexed.
Yeah, Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. I think what I meant regarding, uh, public event, meaning a, a public event that would be, uh, on, uh, public streets and, and something that, um, the Sheriff's Department would respond to. It's a private event in that it's on private property. So if this is a little bit different, if it were on a, a public property, that's where I think the Sheriff's Department would generally be as a standard.
If it was like at a park or something, then that would be?
That's where Sheriff's Office would have more public, more involvement with the traffic control. As, as it's on, as the, the event is being held on a private property, that's why the Sheriff's Office is not managing the traffic. Um, they would only respond to when there's issues on the public street.
Jimmy, so, Sean, what, what's the designation between, what, at what point does it become a private activity to a public activity? In other words, if 5,000 people showed up there, you know, like, is, is, can it still be a private situation? And what, what designates between public and private when you advertise something like this?
Uh, Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. I would probably like the Sheriff's Office to help respond to this, and unfortunately, they're not available at this meeting. But I, that's a good question. I don't know if we have a, a benchmark for that. What is, what we would say is, is private property is what I think the intent is for this event.
Yeah, but I could have a rock, I could have a, I could have a rock concert on my 48, Woodstock, on my 40 acres.
That's why.
And charge, you know, and say donation, and.
That's why, that's why staff is requiring a conditional use permit. Is, it, it is an event that is drawing the public and it's open to the public. That's why we're requiring a conditional.
Oh, if that, if that's the case, and you're requiring a special use permit, is there, is there a, a business, does it, is there different licensing under something like that? No, probably not.
No, because it's the zoning, I mean, it's still, it's R-U-R zoning. It's still a residential. This is a temporary, because of the temporary nature, this, this is not a, it's not gonna be the primary use of this property. It's a, it's a one-time-a-year thing.
Yeah. Then I'd, I'd just have one comment, and it's, I'm not gonna make it part of your, your motion, but I think it would behoove the people putting this on to put some people in your neighbor's front yard and as a thing and saying, courtesy thing, don't turn around in a neighbor's front yard, do all that kind of stuff. That's just a control courtesy thing to your neighbor there. Anyway. Also, was that a motion? I'll second it.
We've not had a motion yet. This is, this is Kath, we're trying. This is Kathleen Willnair. And I, I agree with, uh, Jim in that stipulation number 10 says that temporary no parking signs shall be posted along, uh, West 143rd Street. I wonder if we can ask for, uh, a no U-turn or a no turnaround sign to be placed at the front of driveways on adjacent neighbors if they're not wanting to have someone turn, or if maybe, I know that there are, uh, kids that are directing traffic. If there could be a child to the side of the driveway to let people know that this isn't a turnaround, because it is a neighbor. And I, I know that there is a, a residence next to the pumpkin patch that's had a concern with, uh, the public turning around in their driveway, and they've got to sign up asking people not to turn around in their drive. So maybe if a temporary sign could be up, that might help with the traffic flow too, because if you've got traffic going west on 143rd, and they're having to wait for someone to pull into a driveway and then back out and turn around, and then if they think, "Oh, good, I can do that too", then, then you're, you're kind of losing your traffic flow of trying to get everybody to go west and then head south again. Um, and I, and I do agree with the one-year, uh, term limit instead of five, as far as the revised stipulations go. Um, and then I had the same concern. When does a private party turn into a public event on a, on a private land? Um, I think that that could end up being a, an, an issue if it hasn't been already. Um, and then with that being said, I, I would entertain a motion, Mike.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve, uh, the application number W-NW-22234 for the Hana Drive-Thru, uh, subject to the stipulations of the staff report, and also, uh, limiting the, uh, permit to one year as far as, uh, length of time, so we can see how this goes.
Uh, Mike Fox has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Melissa Morris, second.
Thank you. Melissa, is there any further discussion?
Uh, excuse me.
Yes.
There's one comment, a question.
Just want to clarify if you're using, um, the stipulations in the staff report or the revised stipulations, um, as noted by staff.
The revised stipulation is noted.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Jim Neese, is, when you make this presentation to the, uh, to the church, to the county commissioners, I would hope that you would take a minute and give some input about what our discussion was here. That's all. And you don't need to say anything. I just, I want, I would like, hope that you would do that, Sean. Whoever makes a presentation that this is, is there gonna be a question from five to four, and somebody that lives in Prairie Village is gonna say, "Well, it's a great cause, because we're giving these deals, so..." And I, I think, I think if you would rewrite the staff recommendations, you'd have maybe made it, what, what we're.
Yeah, absolutely. Our recommendation that we take the Board of County Commissioners will be the zoning board's recommended stipulations. That's what we'll present.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Uh, we have the motion on the table now, so we'll go ahead and make a vote as long as there's no other discussion. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, our recommendation from the zoning board will go to the Board of County Commissioners in the affirmative. And Sean, when will that, um, meeting be held? Michelle?
Uh, I think, I checked this. Uh, this application will be considered by the Board of County Commissioners on September 15th at 9:30 a.m., and the meeting will be held in this room, uh, 111 South Cherry Street, Olafah, Kansas. Um, and, uh, that meeting will be an in-person meeting. However, there are also options for joining virtually on Zoom webinar, just as we are with this meeting.
All right. Uh, so for the applicants, uh, you can be present September 15th at 9:30 in the morning in this room, and, uh, that's when they will make their decision on the application. Uh, is there any other business before the board?
Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. I would like to note, uh, our next meeting for the Northwest Zoning Board is September 19th. We do have two cases scheduled for that evening at 6:30 p.m. We also may have, uh, staff may have a couple other items that will add to that meeting, or at least one other item. Uh, draft bylaws for the zoning board. We do not have formal bylaws for any of the zoning boards, so we're talking with all the boards now. We'll be presenting draft bylaws. Uh, they don't need to be acted on at night, but we do want to share that. So we'll be sending out, we plan to send out for the next packet in September, draft bylaws. And we could have a discussion if there's any questions. It could be, uh, the board could make a motion on those that, that evening, or we could continue it to the October meeting. The other item I wanted to alert the board on is, we're planning a zoning board and planning commission training, and we're hoping in the month of September. We're looking tentatively at the September 27th meeting, which is a regularly scheduled meeting for the Planning Commission. We're letting all the boards know about that date, so we wanted to have you check calendars and see if that works. Um, if there's any conflicts, certainly let us know. We'll be sending out an email reminder, all the boards as well. But we wanted to put that on everybody's calendar, September 27th as a possible training date uh, for just general updates for the zoning boards and planning commission.
All right. Thank you, Sean.
I, I.
Yes, any other business? Mike?
I have a comment that I will not be at the September 17th meeting.
September 19th?
What?
The 19th?
I mean, the 19th, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, either one, either one of them.
Any other business? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. You're welcome.